My check. Hello, everyone. I'd like to ask, is there Deborah Cockerham, Cockerham here? She left her Medicare RX card in the bathroom by accident. So we.
But else.
Oh, it does.
If her library, she was interested in that.
We can talk about it at the table. Do you want to be here, wherever you want? Can you hear me? All right, Kath, do you want to do it there or do you want to do it in the middle? Oh. Can we do, can we point the camera here? Sure, yeah. She does the camera, knows the camera angles. Yeah. No, that's, I'm not gonna. No. I just waiting for a thumbs up from. Are we all set? Good to go, okay, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Judge Galen from the 38th District Court, thank you for having me here today for this special occasion. I just want to say a few words. I got motivated after hearing everybody talk about public service. Public service is one of the highest callings that there is. It's putting yourself out in the community to lead, to inspire, to do what's best for the city. And we have two newly elected council members who have done that. So first of all, I want to say, Rob, congratulations to you for being reelected. The city has placed their trust in you again and with good cause. I know that you will lead with honor, integrity, and wisdom. And given that this is your second time on the, on the council, you will undoubtedly have experience to guide and lead and to, to teach and mentor Karen. And the charter and ordinances of the city of East Point. And to endeavor to secure and maintain. An honest and efficient administration. Of the affairs of the city of East Point. Free from partisan distinction or control. And to perform the duties as a member of East Point City Council. Representing the city of East Point according to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
In case you guys were wondering who this cool gentleman is, this is my father, if you couldn't.
Hi, Dad. All right, and Karen, if you can please step up.
Parents, family, come on. Come up here, stand with her.
Show support. It's being recorded on YouTube, so you don't have to record. And I'm sorry, Rob, I didn't ask who was standing next to you. I thought it might have been your brother. Yeah, and Karen, who do you have with you here today? Welcome. And again, congratulations. I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Karen Scott. Do solemnly swear or affirm. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Michigan. And the Charter and Ordnances of the City of East Point. And to endeavor to secure. And maintain. An honest and efficient administration. Of the affairs of the city of East Point. Free from partisan distinction or control. And to perform the duties. As a member of East Point City Council. Representing the city of East Point. According to the best of my ability. Congratulations. I'm going to have you come sign your oath of office. Your signature. You got one more. And congratulations to our city. I'm sure that Rob and Karen are going to do a fantastic job and welcome aboard the East Point family.
You gotta get on the board. Oh, I could take a picture there.
Hello, there we go. All right, everyone, it's eight forty-five, Monday, November tenth, two thousand twenty-five. We'll call the council organizational meeting to order. We just had the oath of office for Councilman Rob Baker and Councilwoman Karen Scott. Could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Curley.
Here.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Here.
Councilmember Shadlick.
Here.
Councilmember Scott.
Here.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick.
Yes.
Councilmember Curley.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott.
Yes.
And now we'll open the first hearing of the public. Would anyone wish to be heard?
Yes, it is. Can you hear me now? Okay. I'm just here to congratulate Councilwoman Baker on his winning reelection. And also to congratulate Councilwoman Scott on her election. I look forward to working with both of you, as always, and the rest of council and mayor. If you guys ever need anything, please feel free to reach out to me. And good luck and enjoy the rest of your meeting and God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica Kleinfeld, East Point resident. First, Margaret Peshadlik was being quite generous when she talked about my dad. You would think general is real proper, but when he came to visit, he taught her daughter at a very young age, a tongue twister. And the tongue twister was, "I'm not a fig plucker or a fig plucker's son, but I'll pluck the figs until the fig plucker comes." And the obscene words that came out of her daughter's mouth attempting to repeat what my dad said was unbelievable. Just wanted to share that because she was a little angry with him. Anyway, I am here to say congratulations on your reelection, Councilwoman Baker, and on your election, Councilwoman Scott. I already have a very good relationship with Councilwoman Baker. I am looking forward to getting to know you better and working with you. Excited to have you come aboard. Welcome, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Oh, we need some tissue here, something is wet. Good evening, Wanda Moody, East Point resident. Good evening to the mayor and council. I'm taking this time to congratulate Rob Baker for your reelection and to our newly elected councilwoman, Karen Scott. I've been a resident here in East Point since nineteen ninety-nine, and I have witnessed good things and not so good things. I have agreed with things and I have disagreed with things. However, regardless, we must all respect the office for which these individuals hold. With that being said, it is my prayer that the elected council members to respect the citizens just as we respect them and stand firm, knowing that they are here for the people and not for themselves. I'm not directing this statement to anyone in particular, just stating that this is a joint venture working for the betterment of East Point. There have been statements that we should not have religion in politics. Yet every meeting is started in prayer. Well, we all need prayer, from the White House to East Point City Council. So my remaining time that I have here today is going to go like this. In the name of Jesus, I pray for the men and women in authority. I pray that the Spirit of the Lord rests upon you, that your words declares, and God's word declare, that blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. So I give godly wisdom to East Point City Council that they will serve the people with gladness. And we give thanks in advance to our Lord and Savior, that the decisions that are made through this council are divinely directed of the Lord. In Jesus's name, that is what I pray on today. And thank you all for listening.
Amen. Thank you.
Good evening, Council Mary Hall, East Point resident. I'm excited. And I have great deal of optimism and hope for this city. That hasn't changed from the very first time I stepped up here and it will continue to be my hope. Now, Rob knows me very well. He knows I won't sugarcoat anything I have to say to him. Karen, you probably figured it out too, because I mean what I say. And it's not because I'm trying to be honorary or snarky or anything. I just don't think that sugarcoating truth is a good use of time. So we will probably not agree on everything, and that's okay. I don't think I've ever agreed with everything everybody's said up here yet, and that's still okay. But I will say this much, and I've said it before, and for whatever reason someone said, they took it as a threat. I don't think I've threatened anybody before, but I will say this again. Congratulations to you both. Just remember how you got here and don't let the residents down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello again, Carol Reed. When I arrived here, I was an egg in my mom's belly. But I want to welcome Karen. Thank you for taking that position, and I'm glad you got elected and congratulations, Rob. And I just want to share something with you. I was, was actually around the post office in the late summer, and I went over to the shopping mall across the street, and I came across the lady who was walking with a cane, and she was really having a hard time. And I, I'm kind of going through similar things, so I started talking to her about her injury. And she explained to me that she didn't have a car and the buses weren't stopping on Grashit because the signs for the bus stop weren't up. So it just came to mind that I'm going to just speak it here because I, when I go home, I totally forget about it. But if somebody, whoever is in charge of putting the, the bus stop signs up, I hope that they will come back again for the handicapped people that are in the city. So that's all, and thank you, and God bless all of you.
Thank you.
Hi, Gary Meyer, East Point resident. Just want to congratulate Rob Baker for the reelection and the newcomer, Karen Scott. Welcome, and hope everything goes well, and thank you, bye.
Thank you. Anyone else?
John Solera. I'd like to apologize to the council. I was under the impression you had turned down the flock cameras, but now I figured out that it was just Cardi D'Amico that voted against them. So that roadblock is gone, good. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Bloom, actually, because you put a resolution across this table a couple of weeks ago. You had a church, the Better Life Church, asking for the council for favors, and you attached a thing that they had not paid their water bill. And what was the council going to do with that? Well, they did nothing. And, and Mr. Curley, you actually said, what if I put a dollar in this line where they have an unpaid dollar bill, a water bill? Well, you know, you can put a dollar, you can send me a, a water bill for a dollar any day. You cannot do that. There's plenty of people, you actually voted for the six percent water increase. There's plenty of people in East Point struggling with water bills. And you can't, you can't, you can't special, you can't specially help this church without passing it on to everyone. That was foolish. And it's also become apparent to me, you're, you're a roadblock to good police work. You, I never heard you say a word when, when President Biden shoved twenty-five million immigrants into this country, asking no one. We have gangs from Colombia, Mexico, North Korea, and who knows where else. And you don't understand police work if you don't want ICE in this city. And that's going to be, I guess, we're going to have to work around you because I, I don't think you understand modern police work. You operate here on a lot of federal money without the police work. This city wouldn't exist without federal money, and you need ICE here. There, there has been a big drug bust in Detroit with fentanyl and all that other stuff. There's been big drug busts in Chicago. There's been big drug busts in Memphis and in San Francisco. We have drug gangs, Detroit is now a drug distribution center, just like Chicago and Memphis. You think these guys, this, this hardworking police department can take care of it by themselves? I don't know what you're thinking. That can't happen. They need help, and they need a cooperation agreement with ICE because we don't even know how many immigrants that Gretchen Whitmer shoved into Wayne County because they always shove them into black areas to use the blacks as cover for their immigrants. So we need to double this police department.
Thank you, time is up.
I didn't get a thirty second.
I'm, I'm sorry, I have my timer from me, so I didn't give the thirty seconds, but that was three minutes.
Okay.
But thank you.
I'll, I'll time it.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. I always pick the wrong time slot, apparently. Congratulations, Councilman Baker. Congratulations, Councilwoman Scott. Glad to see you both here on council. I, well, I know, Councilman Baker, I've seen how you operate on council for the past few years, and I'm assuming, Councilwoman Scott, you will follow suit with integrity and transparency and making it a point to reach out to residents and listen to the residents and support the residents in our businesses and our community. I'm, I'm very confident from watching you, and also I've had a couple of conversations with you, Councilwoman Scott, that, that's how you will, that's how you will operate going forward. And hopefully, in the next meeting or very shortly after that, we can move forward with some things in the city that we've been delaying for a very long time and has been costing this, residents quite a bit of money, quite a bit of aggravation. I believe that this is a fresh start, and we should grab that opportunity to move forward as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. Visiting, oh, they're both gone. Okay. I'd like to say congratulations, Mr. Baker. Come dressed like that all the time now. You got caught. Karen, congratulations. Council, I've been a pain in the butt, but you're doing a good job. Okay. We're gonna miss you, sweetie. You haven't gone yet. You haven't gone yet. I guess you're gonna have fun with the contract, and Mayor, you're gonna have more grand decides with that one. And Harv will tell you how to take care of them, though. Chief, both chiefs, no matter what anybody says, you're my guys. You're doing a great job. The whole city staff, fantastic. Good city, good people, good luck.
Thank you.
You too, Albert.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Larry, East Point residents, I'd like to give congratulations to both candidates, and for Rob Baker, the reseating of his council seat. I've gotten to know him over the years and what have you, and it's well-deserved of him to be back in the seat. Ms. Karen, hopefully we get to know you and what have you, and that you would do the job that's needed. When I first met Councilman Baker, pulled him off to the side and told him, I'm watching you and what have you. I don't care who you are, what color, what race, ethnicity, lineage, or anything. I consider myself a truth seeker and whatever, and that's what I expect and what I look for. And any candidate, any public figure or any of that. And I had made a statement earlier in regard to the city clerk, and I have yet to get an answer or anybody to respond to it. And that's the kind of stuff that got to be done away with. We have to get rid of and what have you. There's a lot of disrespect, disregard to things and what have you. You're above nobody. And so I think that was a very uncalled for, unad, if nothing else, to ignore a direct question that's pertaining to the city of East Point. And this is time out for this type of government, of this type of attitude and running things and what have you. I'm not one to go on because you say so. No, there's too much technology, too much information, too much of everything for us to yet be in the deep state and blind and no transparency to really what's going on. All it takes is a click of a button and find out anything about you we want to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? All right, seeing not the first hearing of the public is closed, we'll move on to, well, no scheduled hearings, no unfinished business, no reports. New business, election of Mayor Pro Tem.
Mayor Kleinfeld, I would move that we elect Rob Baker, Mayor Pro Tem.
All right. I support that too. Is there any other nominations? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
I accept, yes.
I don't think that's ever gone that smoothly. All right, item B, designation of representative and alternate to the South McComb Sanctuary District and South McComb Disposal Authority. Previously, it had been myself with the alternate, Rob Baker. I'd like to keep it that way if council is open to that.
So moved.
Is there support?
I'll support that.
All right, motion to designate myself to the SEMSD and SMDA and Rob Baker as the alternate. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Designation of representative, item C, designation of representative and alternate to Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. I think, well, what does council want to do? This one, I don't mind who wants to be assigned to this.
Who's there now?
I believe it's yourself, and I believe I'm the alternate on it.
That sounds good.
Yeah, I think we should keep the thing safe, same thing.
Okay. Well, I'll make the motion then to designate Councilman Curly as a representative to SEMCOG and myself as the alternate.
A second.
Please call the roll.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott? Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
All right, item D, designation of the Michigan Municipal League Legislative Coordinator. I think this one was Mr. D'Amico. Does anyone have any interest in being the MML coordinator? If not, I don't mind doing it.
I'll second your motion for you to do it.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
All right, item E, appointment of council liaisons to boards and commissions. And currently, Councilwoman Shadlik is assigned to the Arts and Diversity Commission. Councilwoman Shadlik, do you wish to stay on, do you like serving on the commission?
I mean, I'd like to stay, but if someone else would like to take it, I mean, I certainly wouldn't, you know, be adverse to that.
I will support you still doing it with ACDC.
I think you'd do a good job. I support that motion.
All right, so I'm gonna call that a motion by Councilman Baker in support by Councilman Curly to appoint Margaret Shadlik as a liaison to ACDC. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Beautification Commission, that was Councilman D'Amico's. Councilman Scott, or Councilwoman Scott, sorry. Would you like, are you interested in that?
I would love it.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion to appoint Councilwoman Scott as the liaison for beautification.
Support.
Dealer's choice.
Ready?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
All right, item three, the DDA, currently that is Councilmember Curly. Do you wish to stay appointed on that one?
Yes.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Please call the roll.
Who was support on that?
Sounds like it was unanimous already.
Right?
I think I chimed in first.
I think so too. Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
East Point Housing Commission, currently that is Councilmember Curly.
So moved.
Hold on. Want to support?
Support.
Supported by Scott. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
East Point Memorial Library Commission, currently that's Councilmember Curly's. Councilman Curly, did you want to say appointees?
Well, yeah. Newly elected Councilwoman Scott had said that she kind of thought she would like to be on the Library Commission.
Yes.
So I'm perfectly willing to pass it on to you. So I'll make that motion.
I'll support it.
All right. Move by Councilman Curly, supported by Councilman Baker, to appoint Councilwoman Scott as the liaison to the East Point Memorial Library Commission. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
All right, this is moving very quickly. Parks Commission, Councilman Baker, do you want to stay on that?
I would be happy to.
I would move that Councilman Baker retains that position.
Support.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
All right, the liaison for the Planning Commission, currently that's Councilwoman Shadlik.
So moved.
Support.
All right, that was moved by Councilman Curly, supported by Councilwoman Scott. Any comments? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Now, next to the Teen Advisory Commission and the Senior Citizens Commission, I think at this point it would make sense to maybe leave them empty, because the commissions are empty. But I would share, Councilwoman Scott, I think you had some interest in the Teen Advisory Commission, so if we, I'd like to revisit that and see if we can get some applicants in, and maybe at that point come back and assign someone to it.
Sounds good.
Yes.
All right. Let's see, well, that was... Sorry, just lost my agenda. It for the appointments? All right, well then, second hearing of the public. Second hearing of the public is now open. Would anyone wish to be heard?
John Solera. Police chief, I don't know if you've heard, I don't know where word gets around, drug cartels from South America are now sending soldiers to Ukraine to learn not only military tactics, but drum tactics. I don't know how well you're set up for that. I don't think from the present makeup of our council that they understand the seriousness that police work and how fast it's changing is going to start going. So I, once again, this council has to focus on the police department. They need more technology. They need more people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, the reason they're sending their soldiers there is they can come back here into the United States where their cartels are and train their soldiers. So we need to pay more attention. The world is changing very, very fast.
Thank you.
Craig Wodecki. Just, I wanted to be the first one to say Mayor Pro Tem Baker. Congratulations, and Karen Scott, congratulations. You're gonna get a lot of information thrown at you. There's gonna be binders and binders and phone calls and emails, but the one thing that's really important, be visible. And I think what you have with your other four members, they're always somewhere in the community. Maybe not all of them, but always, there's always somebody there. Whenever there's an event, they're there, and they're open to talking to people. Please learn from the peers here who do a really good job of being available in the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Mary Hall Rayford, East Point resident. One of these days, I'm going to learn to keep my mouth shut. I'm not sure when that day is going to be, but bear with me. I'm working on it. There have been a number of situations across the country in which children have been zipped tied, older people thrown to the ground, and arrested or detained without any evidence that they were either undocumented or criminals. I don't know what agreement other police departments had with ICE. To my knowledge, we don't need an agreement with ICE until we see a problem, because I do not want to see children zipped tied. I don't want to see seniors treated like they're less than human, and I guarantee you that if I see that in East Point, can't do anything about it across the nation, but I will be very vocal about it. We have to pay attention and learn to be humane human beings, because without humanity, we are less than animals. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Scott. Welcome to East Point City Council. It's nothing like getting your feet wet right off the bat, huh? Just want to thank Chief Haynes and Chief Clark. You do an amazing job for our city, and I have full confidence in both of you that we are in very good hands with how you are running things right now. And again, that's it. I hope, you know, moving forward, council can kind of come together and that you will, you know, rely on us to help support you. I think it works best when we all work together and feel like we are all involved in the community in the same goals together. Thank you. Have a good night.
Start with Councilman Baker. No, no, we'll start with Councilman Curly, and then we'll end with you two at the end.
Oh, that's a good idea. Just one thing, it was mentioned, right, it's Veteran's Day tomorrow. Think about all of the men and women who served in the armed services to protect our country. There's a lot of them. We all know somebody. So just take a few moments off, say a prayer for those who gave their lives to protect America, and say a prayer for those who are now serving overseas in some horrible countries. So we just want to have them stay safe and be able to come back home. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Shadlik.
I'd like to echo the sentiments as well. Councilmember Curly, I'd like to thank our veterans and thank the mall for our service. We have many veterans here in East Point, and we really do appreciate them. I'd also like to offer my condolences to Renee Lurch and Foulche. She lost her husband about a week ago, Barry. Barry's also a lifelong resident, and, you know, I wanted to extend my condolences to his family, his daughter Baron and son Keegan. Just let them know that we're in, they're in my thoughts and prayers as well. And welcome to Karen, as well as Rob. Welcome back. Thank you.
Thank you. I am just going to echo tomorrow of people with pause and just take a moment to either thank veteran if you're speaking to one, or just take the time to appreciate the service and the things that people do for us. Welcome back, Rob Baker. Congratulations. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem. And welcome, Councilwoman Karen Scott. I'm excited to see you here. I've had a few conversations with you. You've shared some of your ideas, and I think she's got some good ones that you guys are going to look forward to hearing at council. So I think you have great energy, and I just look forward to working with you. So congratulations. And I will kick it over to Councilman Baker.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a couple of things. I am proud to say that I have been very supportive of our police department, and I think that our police department has done a great job of letting us know the things that they need for their department. And I feel pretty confident that Chief Haynes will verify my statement. And it's kind of one of those things where I don't try to make assumptions of what his department needs, how they move, the inner workings. I listen to, you know, what he brings to us, what shows up on our agenda for our consideration. And I have tried to be as supportive as I can for the needs of the the police department, and that is my plan going forward. Our first responders, I have a great appreciation for them. When I've needed service, they've come. And I appreciate that. And I've heard the stories and testaments of others. So I think that that's... I can't put into words how much respect that I have for those departments. Thank you to everybody that... I know we thank the election workers and everybody that facilitated our elections. I want to say thank you to everyone who helped me get back here. I am appreciative of it. I believe that campaigning is a community effort, and I am just thankful for another opportunity to serve the community. Like many have said before, they've seen us out in the community. Like Mr. Wodecki said, we're always somewhere. For a while, I had a unique work schedule where I was able to do a lot of volunteer work with Gleaners. I was with PACE, the East Point Community Action Coalition. I've done a number of things. Some fundraisers that benefited children for scholarships. So those were some of the things that I had the opportunity to do. And it's always a pleasure to serve when the opportunity is there. There was a few things. Senator Kleinfeld mentioned that she knew me well. And just as people were kind of just telling, saying how they already had a familiarity with me, one thing that I recall with her, there was one time, I think, after my first term, I was doing campaign finances. There was something. I don't know if it was campaign finances or petitions. But she came to drop some paper off at my house, and I was sick. And I'm one that doesn't really get sick. And she came to my door, and she looked at me and said, she was like, "You don't look right. Get your stuff. We're going to the hospital." And she took me to the ER. She made me go. So it's just like I have those fond relationships and memories with people that I interact with. To Mr. Lamo. Yes, sir. I was happy to still be able to put this suit on. I've had it for a while. I had to dust it off. I won't say that it'll be making a debut at every meeting, or how many meetings going forward, but we'll see what we can do. To Mr. Edwards, I will try to follow up with you in the upcoming days. I know you had some questions. But I don't want to speak on behalf of someone else, and I want to make sure that I give you as accurate of an answer as I can. And I believe... Oh, something that I haven't done in a while. I used to do a thing that I call Word of the Day, or Thought for Your Walk, or Term to Learn, a Phrase to Say, you know, just something. So there was one today, well, there's one that I've known for a while. It's a Latin phrase, and I'm not fluent in Latin, so if I mispronounce something, just bear with me. But the phrase is, "Quis custodi... Quis custodiat ipsos custodaece," or something like that. And that means, "Who guards the guardians?" Or "Who watches the watchmen?" And it's something for reflection. It's something that I think we do well to think about as we serve the community. But it's also something for you guys to think about as we serve the community. Thank you. Oh, and Ms. Scott, welcome.
Councilwoman Scott.
Okay. I'm just very excited to be on this dais with everyone here. I know I've had a warm introduction with almost every member, and I look forward to working with all of you guys. I know Mr. DeMonico made a statement about the service or the work is free. Every day when I walk into the school building, even though I get a check, it's like I'm working for free. But what I... The joy that I get out of it is the teaching and the service that I give to the children every day. That doesn't amount to any amount of dollar in my account. That is payment there. And so, being on this council, the service, and serving the community and the residents, is what I'm looking forward to most. Congratulations to Rob Baker as Mayor Pro Tem. I'm looking forward to working with him. I'm looking forward to working with you, Mayor Kleinfeld. I'm looking forward to actually getting to know you a little better. I know we've talked a couple times. But maybe some one-on-ones. I know. Councilman Curly, we got to love him. I love him. And I look forward to working with you. And Ms. Doom, thank you so much. I know, while I was running in the beginning processes, there was some difficulties, and she was able to help me out tremendously. So I want to thank you. Heartfelt. Thank you. Valvia, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move to adjournment. Ms. Scott, would you like to make the first motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll support. In the future, you're going to have to compete with these two. So please call the roll.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Being adjourned at 9:25.